It is May 16th. If you ask my kids, it is nine sleeps into the last day of school as a more important metric. Laura, will you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Get part.
Niznick.
Here.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zess.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, so we have two items on our agenda tonight. I think the first one, we're starting out with, let's see, something around the strategic plan. I don't have it in front of me right now. Do you want to kick us off, Rob?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Thanks, everybody. Good to see you here today. So we have two presentations. The first is to give you all an update in regards to strategic plan progress. We're going to talk to you a little bit about some of the work that our team has done around instruction and then talk a little bit about math pathways, board members, as you'd recall. A lot of work this year in regards to creating more consistent access to advanced mathematics across the district and developing math pathways. And so our team will be speaking to that and then have an update from our long-range advisory committee. And so with that, for our first information work session item, I'll turn the presentation over to Dr. DeLa Cruz.
Good evening, Vice President Sweeney Moran and members of the board and of course, Dr. Anderson. We are glad to provide you with an update on our strategic plan focused specifically on instructional practices in our schools, which have been structured over the course of the last two years in ways that are intended to resource and support teachers and leaders in calibrating our teaching and learning in ways that enhance the experience and the outcome for students. Since we're focusing on instruction, we'll also highlight the math pathways work with a summary of the efforts so far, the input sessions, the current state, and the next steps. I'm glad to be joined by Heather Hanson, one of our Directors of Teaching and Learning, who has been leading the math pathways work alongside Paige Wild, our elementary math specialist, and Monica Gilmore, our secondary math specialist, who's here with us this evening and will provide information if needed as questions arise. So while instruction truly connects with every theme in our Altogether for All Students strategic plan, the spotlight tonight is really on that first theme of challenging, engaging, relevant instruction, and that's where we will focus this conversation. So what you see here is a graphic of the BVSD instructional infrastructure. Over the past two years, our work has really been shaped by this instructional infrastructure, which essentially lays out the elements that need to be coherent across a system in order to have high-quality instruction for students. You can see that this infrastructure is centered on the conditions for quality instruction, which is right there in the center, and the interconnectedness of each component. They're anchored in the curriculum components, which includes what we teach and how we teach it, assessment strategy, which tells us if our teaching is working, collaboration structures, and data systems, and all surrounded by the ecosystem of professional learning, observation, feedback, and coaching, and continuous revisions and monitoring. We've been calibrating our professional learning more than ever to the actual work that we are doing focused by the core of the instructional infrastructure. And as we have focused our work more and more, our teachers have told us that through their feedback that we're getting better and better at meeting their needs through professional learning. In fact, we began this strong focus, really strengthening it in January, and our teachers told us on a scale of one to five, with five being excellent, that the professional learning they've been provided January through May has improved more and more and has moved from a 4.25 to a 4.6 in the content being applicable to their teaching practices and the sessions being engaging for adult learners. This is just one of the qualitative metrics of our intentional work and progress to support Last year, we shared with the board that we had created an instructional playbook. This year, we've taken it to another level of clarity and support in the areas of prioritized standards and scope and sequence, which are those curriculum components, also instruction, assessments, and multi-tiered systems of support or MTSS and data-driven instruction. We've continued to advance the BVSD instructional playbook as a one-stop-shop for BVSD educators to find many helpful resources to use in their classrooms every day. This was born from input from our teachers about what they need, and we're so glad to report that it's being widely used and continues to expand to meet our educators' needs. Although there are now many more resources than what you see on these four tiles, we're going to give you a glimpse into what our educators find in these four areas, which are consistent with the instructional infrastructure that you saw on Slide 3 and consistent with best practices. BVSD leaders and teachers are increasingly using prioritized standards to anchor their teaching. We still have room to grow here, and although the focus on standards is expanding and especially with data-driven instruction and the availability of these easy-to-access supports. When educators click on the menu, they find the PK through 12 standards and curriculum and standards pages. We built out the elementary curriculum and standards pages first so we could set that solid foundation at the earliest school years, and we'll be building out middle school next, beginning with middle school math, which will align with the scope and sequence of our new math materials. So let's take a look at what an elementary educator finds when they click into the elementary curriculum and standards link. On this menu, educators can access a wealth of information in these four areas that you see on the slide. You can see across the top that this page links to PK through 5th grades and also to specials, so we also have music, art, and PE resources available. Let's click in a little deeper and take a look at what a grade-level teacher can find. And this will just be an example of what any teacher can find when they're looking for resources. Our instruction is guided by the question, what do students need to be able to know and do and understand in a grade level or in a course? For instance, if I click on Grade 3, I'm taken to this page that you see here with links to all of the elements that you see on the slide, so math, reading, social studies, et cetera. And all these content areas also assess to our, link to our assessment calendar, the BVSD MTSS guide, and a feedback form for our iterative improvement process informed by the user of these pages.
Laura, if I could just pause you to make a comment. So, board members, as you will recall, as you have kind of, over the past two years, have joined me on school visits, right? This is a real big celebration. I would say that when we started with the best of intentions, it was really the feedback from our educators that allowed us to get to where we are today, that by shaping resources in the ways that they have kind of guided us, continuously listening, understanding what they need. And so I just want to commend the team on being open to feedback and being willing to shape these resources for the end user, which in this case are educators. And for those of you that have been at roundtables with me over the past few months where we went to all the elementary schools, maybe on one hand, after meeting with hundreds and hundreds of teachers, certainly much more positive feedback than continued concerns. And so just wanted to lift up the progress and the process that we used to get to this point.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Dr. Anderson. And you said it exactly right, and that is that we are, our goal is to provide our teachers with what they're asking for so that they can do what they do best. The focus on instruction is all about exactly what Dr. Anderson just said, providing teachers with the guidance and resources that they've asked us for, for quality and engaging learning experiences. The teaching and learning resources here help teachers to refine and shape instructional practices to meet the needs of students. Let's double-click in and find our BVSD instructional model. This is one very such tool to support the teaching and learning process in classrooms. We're really proud of this model. It was co-designed with input from across our system and also from research on best practices and instructional models. And then all those pieces were put together by our Directors of Teaching and Learning, who provide strong leadership and professional learning around the instructional model and each of the phases you see here. So although the instructional model was first unveiled three years ago, as we know, it's been, those were some rocky years, and one of our goals during this year is just to make sure that we reignite the understanding and the exposure and the use of the instructional model and its use since we were coming out of those challenging times. And we knew that a refresher with increased clarity would be necessary, and it has been, and it's been very useful. Principals alongside staff have identified at least one phase of the instructional model that they're focusing on in their school and that they'll continue to work on and deepen into next year. Our team also developed resources, including overview videos, key practice look-fours, strategy webpages, and late-start professional learning sessions on differentiation strategies through language-rich interactive classrooms. You'll see links to those resources here, and also linked across the top are mini modules. So where you see those squares that say engage, set goals, guide new learning, reinforce and reflect, and demonstrate unit learning, those are the phases of the instructional model. And when they're clicked into, there is a mini module, a professional development video about that phase of the instructional model, along with exemplars of that phase in action. And then across the bottom, you can see all kinds of just-in-time supports for our educators, from a principal instructional model to the model overlaid with educator goals, everything that you see there, I won't read them all to you, but also then at the bottom, you see tools for building leaders to facilitate learning. So we're really scaffolding the ability of our leaders even to provide that professional learning to their staff as well. An assessment strategy aims to provide administrators and teachers with the data required to better understand our students, to identify progress, and to reflect on how teaching is going and how it's resulting in the success that we want our students to have. Our educators have the information that they need to administer and analyze assessments that inform them about what students have learned and what they need next. Our Balanced Assessment Framework, which was developed over the course of last year, provides comprehensive but concise information about the purpose, the administration, and the use of assessments intended to inform teachers about student learning. We've designed a clear and simple assessment calendar, as well as simple, common language about the types of assessments teachers can use and what they're designed to do. As school teams have let us know what they need, we've provided additional tools, and we've updated and modified these materials in order to make them relevant, up-to-date, and as practical and applicable as possible. Usable and practical data systems and opportunities to collaborate in using those data are key. We're making significant gains in providing time and structures for teachers to collaborate in using data systems, analyzing data to understand our students, developing their expertise, reflecting on their practice, and then rolling up their sleeves to plan instruction together. We took the guesswork out of data-driven instruction and MTSS and provided clear guidelines and protocols for our educators to use. So we're going to double-click into the BVSD MTSS guide so that you can see more. I know there's a lot on this slide, and that's because it's a screenshot of the BVSD online MTSS guide, which was really the best way to show you the wealth of information in this toolbox. This is where educators can find everything they need to know to begin, to continue, and to enhance MTSS with their team. Through this online present, although this online presence is great, what's even greater is that we also have teams of district personnel who deploy to schools to provide guidance in all of these areas and more, and really are that side-by-side guide for implementation and expansion of MTSS in schools. We track that deployment of our support teams, as well as what kind of support is being offered, and then we cross-reference that with the progress that we are seeing or that we're not seeing, and that helps to inform our next steps.
If I could pause you once again, Laura. Board members, this isn't the first time as a district we've rolled out MTSS, and as just a reminder, MTSS stands for Multi-Tierred Systems of Supports. And it's really the framework that we have as a school district when, after a teacher teaches a concept for the kids who didn't understand or didn't get it, right? And so I would say that there's a lot here because we've really tried to create incredible clarity, incredible supports, and then also push-in supports, as Laura has shared, as we're going into buildings, right? To make sure that teachers have what they need to implement MTSS and differentiate instruction, right? You know, so sometimes it's, I teach it, I pull a small group of kids together, they get a second dose, they get it. Sometimes it's more intensive than that. Sometimes it's ongoing classroom types of interventions from your classroom teacher. And so, you know, I paused because I think this is really significant that, you know, over time, we've tried to do this, but with pretty loose guidelines and loose expectations around implementation, and those things have gotten tighter, especially as we found need, as Laura has shared, where we're seeing the needs when we're looking at our formative data that's coming back through the various assessments in our Balanced Assessment Framework, that we're actually taking pause, going in and helping schools figure out what else they could be doing to reach kids.
And we just want to share some of the instructional shifts that are taking place. We're seeing progress as a result of all these developments, which are directly tied to our strategic plan, goals, and metrics. And as you see here, the experience of our educators and students is also changing. With our educators, we're excited to see data-driven instruction standards and assessments being used more broadly, more intentionally, across more campuses than before. As Dr. Anderson just conveyed, the use of the framework of multi-tiered systems of support is definitely something we're seeing more of, building understanding about in our schools to ensure that we're supporting students in ways that they need us to and that we're teaming around that. We're seeing calibrated practices in the delivery of the educational program, and the instructional model is gaining school-wide use across campuses as well. Additionally, we're seeing more understanding of application of differentiation, and that's an area that we're still building on. It's an area that we know that we need to continue to grow in, and our educators have told us that they want to grow in. That's an area we've really focused our professional learning around as well. Our students are demonstrating reading progress that we're excited to share with you when Jonathan Dings and I come before you with that update. They're experiencing more access to interventions and scaffolds and extensions, more access to advanced coursework, concurrent enrollment, CTE pathways, bilingual programming. Of course, the new curriculum will also be a game changer in many ways at elementary reading as we roll that out, small first and then more broadly, and then middle school math, new curriculum as well. We really have been moving the dial inch by inch, year over year, at a pace and cadence that is intended to create sustained progress, and we're excited about what we're seeing. We've moved high-support schools at the strongest pace first, but targeted and flexible support schools are very much in the work with us and very much also moving forward. We're also seeing greater understanding and use of evidence-based practices in classrooms, and we anticipate seeing even greater clarity as we bring on those new curricular materials that I mentioned in elementary and middle school, specifically middle school math. And on the note of math, the math pathways work intends to shape, update, and expand opportunities for students across grade levels. And here to tell you more about that is Heather Hanson.
Thank you, Dr. DeLa Cruz, and good evening, Vice President Sweeney Moran and members of the board. My name is Heather Hanson, and I am pleased to be here with you tonight. So when we say math pathways, what do we really mean? So math pathways define the possible sequences of math courses. They also describe how students are able to access those sequences. So the vision of this work is to really offer pathways that disrupt the inequitable and disproportionate patterns that we've seen in math, both in achievement and opportunity. And so this must include equipping our teachers to facilitate evidence-based, differentiated, language-rich opportunities in every mathematics classroom. Each student family and teacher brings so much to this math pathways work, and so we spent the last six months asking key stakeholders, what is really going well in math and where can we do better for your students and for your children? Where can we grow as a system to better support students to reach their own math goals? And through listening sessions with 112 teachers, 78 families, and a number of students, we've really gathered some themes, some findings, and some recommendations that we're looking forward to sharing with you tonight. So let's start with teachers. Teachers had the opportunity to provide input both early and throughout the process of developing these pathways. And one clear trend that emerged was a desire to keep a traditional sequence in high school courses. If you're not familiar, that traditional sequence is typically Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II, and Pre-Calculus. Teachers also really asked for an increase in intervention opportunities for students while also asking for new courses, courses specifically that reflect the changing world, and teachers felt it would be really important to design a new course of offerings that meet that moment. There was a clear desire for updated materials and training, as well as the need to apply thoughtful, transparent eligibility criteria for enrollment in advanced coursework. Finally, reevaluating two-year algebra emerged as a key finding from teachers. So currently, some students are placed in an Algebra I course that spends two years covering one year's worth of algebra content. Enrollment in these courses is disproportionately high for students of color and for students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. So teachers are asking us as a system across high schools to look at our practices for placing students in those courses and to grow alternative ways to support students to succeed in Algebra I. Families also offered powerful insights, as they always do. Families shared that what they really want is to have their students engaged in math learning that applies to the real world and really sets their kids up for success. They shared that it's sometimes pretty confusing to know what courses are offered and to support their children to choose courses that match their interests and match their goals. They also included a desire for more intervention and more support in small groups. There was overwhelming appreciation in the family feedback also for teachers, specifically families really, really noted gratitude for teachers who helped their children see themselves as mathematicians and really helped them dig into challenging problems. We also heard a trend from families of color, that they deeply hope that their children can consistently be seen as capable and talented. And the gravity of that feedback in particular carries a weight that we take really seriously, and we plan to adapt practices in math to better ensure that every student has the opportunity to grow, to achieve, to be successful in the math pathways with high expectations and a high level of support. Then we spoke with many, many students. Students noted how impactful it is when a teacher encourages them to ask questions, to get help, and to really see their mistakes as opportunities and create that safe place where students can take risks. Students also noticed disproportionality in classes. A student of color shared in particular that when a class has more white students in it, it's seen by others as a hard class. The student honestly said to us, "I wonder sometimes if there's a place for me in there." A third theme was students asking for more small groups and interactive experiences, and without exception, they said, "Please give us less lecture." Students also shared their experiences around equitable access to classes. In this quote, "The reason I am not able to take courses is because of factors I can't control." This particular student was referencing where they were in the English language acquisition process and whether or not they were able to secure permission from a teacher to take the course that they wanted to take. And while students did not ask for intervention using those words, they did share that they really wish they could have more opportunities to get help in class instead of having to come after school, particularly at the high school level. So given that feedback, we believe that these six recommendations that I'll outline will support our teachers, families, and students in what they are asking for around improvements and refinements to our math pathways. First, we're recommending that we design a data science course, as it offers, and offer it as a rigorous and relevant option in high school. The Bureau of Labor cites that employment of data scientists is projected to grow 36% from 2021 to 2031, much faster than the average of all occupations. And we really want to be able to meet this moment for our students and equip them to leave high school, able to look for patterns, to pull out useful information from large amounts of unstructured data, using software, using data mining, using statistical methods, algorithms, and machine learning principles, which is particularly salient now with all that's happening with AI. Next, investing in differentiation resources will be key to this work. So what might this mean? It might mean intensifying supports and training for teachers, parent educators, and academic tutors, to ensure that they have the resources needed to target students' specific needs within that universal classroom. In Grades 6 through 8 specifically, this work is already off the ground, leveraging our newly adopted math curriculum and the professional learning connected to it, starting this spring, summer, and all the way through next school year. Third, we're proposing a focus on expanding access to Algebra I. Algebra I is often referenced as a gateway to post-secondary success. It helps to develop your critical thinking skills, including problem-solving and logic, patterns, and reasoning. And so our aim is really to reduce the number of students in two-year algebra and invest in high-quality algebra materials, as well as teacher training, to ensure every algebra classroom is highly interactive and rich with language opportunities. Next, deepening and defining intervention. So all stakeholders indicated this was a need. And as we adopt universal materials from here on out, we're also evaluating intervention resources alongside of that universal adoption of core materials. Regarding acceleration, the current elementary model is to compact 4th grade and 5th grade standards into one year of coursework. So we're recommending that we stick with that model for now and reevaluate it when it's time for updated universal K through 5 materials, which will be in a few years. Advanced classes, however, in middle school are shifting, and will be shifting towards covering one and a half years of content instead of a full two years of content, which allows for a greater depth of learning in these courses. And our new curriculum materials are designed in this way to compact in just this way, and it's also what's recommended by the National Council of the Teachers of Mathematics. Finally, clear communication is paramount, as always. Currently, most communication about math is led at the school level, and families and teachers are overwhelmingly asking for a more centralized hub of resources for families and internally, which really outlines clear, simple math information and resources for families, visuals of the course pathways and why a student might choose a particular course pathway, to really help as our children navigate their years with us as mathematicians. So where are we in our next steps to bringing these recommendations to fruition? Our first step was to bring them to you tonight to get some feedback and some thoughts. Upon, you know, approval, we'll bring teacher work groups together in the 23-24 school year for data science and for Algebra I refinements. We'll also build and launch a communication plan alongside Randy Barber and his team. We'll continue to deepen the learning opportunities for teachers in differentiation so that all students, no matter what their postgraduate hopes and dreams are, are highly supported to succeed in their math journey in BVSD. Thank you.
We're glad to have had the opportunity to share progress in practices, resources, and planning, and would be happy to hear questions that the board may have. Stacy?
Thank you. So my question might be a comment, I'm not exactly sure, is about math. And when my son was at Boulder High, he had a teacher who did a flipped classroom. And when you talk about students wanting more time in class to go over concepts, I thought that was brilliant, and I'm wondering if there are incentives to have teachers think outside the box like that, or if there is incentives to help them do a flipped classroom because it seemed to really, it was really a great idea. I mean, you have to be self-motivated at home to watch the actual lectures on YouTube or whatever, but then when you get into class, that's where it's really rich because you've already learned it, and then you have that time in class with your teacher. And I'm just wondering if, especially in math, if there's any incentive to expand that or have other innovative ways to teach.
So to define for the rest of the board what a flipped classroom is, flipped classroom. So if, you know, math classes fundamentally probably haven't changed since we all took math, right? Which is, you show up- Which is you show up, you've got 50 or so minutes. Who has questions on the homework? The few kids who have the guts to ask questions raise their hands. Those problems get done, right? Then, and then it's on to the direct instruction. Then if you have a few minutes left of class, start the homework, right? Does this sound familiar? Kind of rinse, repeat, do that for, you know, seven, eight, you know, well, no, seven years. Sixth grade through, through 12th grade. The idea of the flipped classroom is you take the lecture piece and you translate that over to video. And so for homework as opposed to kids, especially in mathematics, being stuck on problems that they don't know how to do. Now with Khan Academy, with other technology, it's a lot, you know, kids aren't as isolated as they may have been in the past. And if they're lucky enough to have a parent who has skills in Algebra I and above, then they can get some help there. But what happens is oftentimes, you know, a couple of problems into the homework, the kids get stuck, they give up. And then after the course of a few months, they find themselves lost, frustrated. Any event, you know, with the flipped classroom, you take the lecture, the lecture is a video, you watch the lecture for homework, then the problems that you work through, you do in class to get more support. So I think that that aligns, that that would, you know, a process like that would align to what students are asking for, which is this idea of, you know, there's this gradual release of information when you're teaching, right? And if you've ever taught anybody anything, this will resonate. It's, "I do, we do, you do." Not enough "we do." The "we do" is where kids can make mistakes, they get the support, there's, the educators are either in small groups or getting feedback. A lot of times it's "I do, then you do." And if you can't do, then see me, then we do. So the idea of this, giving more space for that where you can help kids through their misconceptions, if there's gaps in their learning, especially in mathematics, if there's computational areas, there's lots of, they skip a step, they misuse a formula, there's lots of steps where I think kids can slip and they need some more of that support. So I love that we got to talk about flipped classrooms, thank you Stacy. And hopefully that gives you some context. And Heather, hopefully the things I've said don't contradict what you and your team have been talking about around this idea of how do we give more kids more opportunities to accelerate in math, which opens up a whole wealth of careers and opportunities when they leave us, you know, STEM-related? And how do we keep kids encouraged? And so, you know, the instructional model and some of the resources that would help with that.
Nicole?
Thank you for that, that was a lot. The bulk of my questions are about math, but I had a question in the first part. I noticed there was a feedback button that teachers can use to give feedback, I presume about the content and the assessments and different things at some of the roundtables and I've received emails personally about the number of assessments that fifth graders have to take at the end of the year. Is that a place where a teacher could say, "This assessment schedule is nuts, can we please adjust it?" Is that kind of what that feedback tool is for or is it for other things?
The feedback can be about that, frequency of, the experience of, or also the platform itself where they're finding the resources. And we have been, the team's already working with the feedback that we've gotten from our teachers around that and making modifications and refining the assessment, in particular for fifth graders who had a heavy load from CMS on. So we heard that and we're definitely making changes.
Great. And then I really appreciate the getting closer to fidelity with MTSS. We've been talking about that for a long time and it's good to see that we're making strides in finally implementing that. How are you monitoring the degree to which schools and staff are following your scope and sequence, following the stuff that's laid out, whether it's MTSS or whether it's other aspects? How are you, how are you monitoring that aside from student performance?
Yeah, a few different ways. One, that deployment dashboard that I referenced. So that lets us know not only who we have in schools supporting, but also what that support is. So it takes the guesswork out for us and for the school. And then we cross-reference that with our executive directors who are in schools alongside principals, looking at data connected to that support. And then that all becomes also part of the learning loop with the guidance and the learning that we're providing to our school leaders so that they can continue to lead the work in schools. So it's really a kind of a comprehensive view of what's happening in schools.
Okay, thank you for that. And then math. So, you know, my getting involved in this district and in my schools really was around equitable opportunities and access to math. So I'm really excited about this work that we're doing as a district and I have a couple of different questions. So you had mentioned that a lot of fifth graders or a lot of elementary schoolers are accelerated by taking a four or five math course. The experience that I've had in talking to bulk of parents, a lot of folks take online sixth by having to skip fifth grade math altogether because not all schools offer a four or five. Do you have the information on how many schools currently offer a four or five compacted versus the option just to skip over fifth grade?
So currently, we're gathering data from, our principals are just finishing up, you know, doing all that kind of data crunching. And right now, we have, I believe it's 31, the last time I checked, schools that are offering a four or five next year. And the remainder of schools are still evaluating those third graders and really talking with families and seeing if there is, if that's the right fit for students.
And that four or five, is that something like, is it an online four or five? Is it in-house four or five? Can you explain a little bit about how that offering works as an acceleration model for elementary schoolers?
It really depends on the formula of where FTE meets student need. So what we start with is, you know, the FTE comes in a package from Dr. Anderson somewhere, sometime in March.
Yeah, no.
So the FTE, the FTE comes based on, you know, the enrollment and the, you know, the per pupil. And so then what principals are tasked with is making, taking student need and what the data says students need next alongside the FTE. And sometimes that looks like a virtual offering through BU, which we're thrilled to be able to offer. Sometimes that looks like an in-person class and sometimes it looks like a combination of the two. And so that's made on a, really on an as-needed basis for that particular cohort of students and what they need instructionally to match their needs. We're also, BU is also really engaging in a lot of reflective work about online learning and what that looks like and feels like in a virtual environment for students. And we're ensuring that in that virtual environment, there are teacher leads who are, you know, who are getting a lot of support for how to guide that learning with students. So for example, it might be something like, like maybe you have your virtual BU teacher on the screen and everyone's listening to the lesson and then the teacher says, "Okay, now get with your learning leader." And, you know, "Everyone, talk about these two problems we just had and make sure you write down, you know, what was easy, what was hard. And then we'll come back and talk about it in five minutes." So when I think currently about myself as a mom in COVID with three, you know, pre-teensagers at the time, you know, all learning online, it's not, it's not that. And it's very much interactive and it's collaborative and the feedback loops are tight.
And then are we using a universal assessment tool for all students? Do all students, all schools take some sort of screener to identify whether or not they would qualify for these courses or not? And how does that work? Because there in the past has been a great deal of inconsistency there.
Yes, there's a body of evidence of eligibility that schools are, that's consistent between schools. And so that's the starting point. And so that includes, that includes many different criteria. And actually, we can, I'm sure we can get that too if you'd like to see it more in depth and detail. But it's, but it's a, it's a battery of achievement and also interest in math. You know, some kids even might not have the exact score, but if they love math and are asking, you know, interesting questions and have that perseverance and problem solving, then that's also weighed into the body of evidence. We also really want to encourage students to take academic risk who are underrepresented in those classes as well. And so we're really looking at, you know, like where you are in the language acquisition process should not be a barrier because every one of our course offerings, regardless of whether they're advanced or not, needs to include that language-rich scaffolding for our students that are developing English or for our brilliant bilingual children. And so being in the language acquisition process is not, is not a barrier to being eligible for that class.
And I'll ask one more question and hand it over. So one point of frustration for parents over time is getting into an advanced path. There have been pretty certain points at which one could do that. And if you missed those points, you either had to double up or you were kind of out of luck or you did a summer school class. And I was wondering, with the new pathway, which you have not yet unveiled, are we having multiple opportunities to enter at different points, middle school, high school? What is, and what does that look like in a way that is meaningful and not necessarily overly burdensome to students and families?
Yes, yes, and yes. So that's one of the really exciting pieces around the curriculum that we've adopted and the conversations that we're having. It has been that there's sort of this, you know, this bus stop. And if you didn't get on the bus when you were eight, then when you're 19, these are the classes that you have on your transcript. And so that was one of our primary drivers, was for more flexibility and on-ramps and off-ramps. And so our current pathways will provide that in a few different ways. I mentioned briefly when I was talking about the, how one and a half years of compacting instead of two is a model that this new curriculum offers. And flexibility of on-ramps and off-ramps is one of the reasons that publishers are starting to design more that way. So for example, let's just walk through, I'm at the end of third grade. And I don't, I don't think that four or five is quite right for me for a multitude of different reasons that I've decided with my family and teacher, but I really like math. So I'm going to take fourth grade math in fourth grade and fifth grade math in fifth grade. And then that same group of educators alongside of, you know, me who's not going to middle school can look at the body of evidence and go right to advanced one in sixth grade. So having not had any, you know, formal acceleration in elementary at all, you could go into that advanced one pathway and that course would do all of sixth grade and half of seventh. And then the next year, advanced two, tell me to stop if I'm going in too much detail. Then the next one, the next course does half the rest of seventh and all of eighth. So a student who hadn't been accelerated in elementary school and was just deeply learning the elementary content in the grade level that they were assigned could end up taking algebra in eighth grade and, you know, geometry and so forth.
But they still wouldn't get to calculus?
They would.
On that one?
They would have geometry in ninth grade, they would have Algebra II in their sophomore year, pre-calculus junior year. And then senior year, they could choose to take either Calc AB, Calc BC or maybe they wanted to take our new data science course or statistics or anything like that. So without any elementary acceleration, a child would absolutely have a pathway using this new model to take calculus. They also would have multiple off-ramps that wouldn't mean they'd have to take an exact same course again.
I would say that we have a lot of communication to do around this in the sense that, you know, when things have been a certain way for a certain amount of time, perfect or imperfect, people get to know it and understand it, right? And so, you know, the hope would be that there's less pressure on elementary kids to have to accelerate, right? That we have that option there, that it's a viable option for kids who are ready, but not for the kid who's worried they're not going to be able to take calculus. They're not having to make that decision at nine or 10, right? That seems a little bit intense, right? And so, you know, communicating that, that there's multiple ways for kids to be able to accelerate. And Heather, what you said, I think is really important. Say we have a kid stretch and they take a sixth and half a seventh and don't feel like that they're ready to move on. They'd be well-prepared to take seventh grade math because they've had sixth grade math. They've had half of seventh grade math. So I do think that it will take some communication, it will take some refining. I think that there are perceptions that we will have to begin to understand and kind of more share widely this philosophy, the realities of what this, you know, what the current lack of coherence has caused in our system. Parents picking schools in particular because they know that their kid could get a math class and not have to, right, you know, win a lottery to get something. I think there's perceptions around the effectiveness of, of online versus in-person. I mean, we've seen that at the board table with, you know, parents coming from individual schools saying, "We need this, this is the only way." And that's not a sustainable way to be able to have in-person instruction. The virtual is a sustainable way. And so I do think we're going to have to have some communications. And I think we're going to have to communicate with our teachers who are going to have to embrace new and different ways of looking at readiness and what that means and new and different ways of instruction where it's not, "I'm just going to plow through the curriculum," right? You know, "And if you can't keep up, you weren't ready." Like that can't be our philosophy. You know, we have to slow down, we have to really embrace the instructional model. We have to embrace, you know, listen to our kids, embrace having more time for kids to struggle and work through word problems, equations with the help and support of teachers in class. And all that's going to take time, but we have a model. We have something we're trying to do and that's huge, right? Because it used to just be one-off. And then we would just try to fix the one-offs all over the place, which was incredibly inequitable. So, you know, with equity as a lens and our strategic plan driving this initiative, I'm really proud of the work the team has done. It has not been easy, I know it hasn't. That's a lot of engagement, a lot of differing opinions, but I'm very excited on where this is and where it's headed.
Sorry, Kitty, do you mind Beth said she's got to follow up?
I didn't want to lose Heather's momentum about what she was just describing. So I really appreciate all the clarity you provided, a lot of Nicole's questions are mine. But it seems like to me that the accelerated math pathway becomes most kind of complicated at the transition points, you know, elementary to middle and the middle to high. And I know we have a model and I think it's great that we're working towards this. But my question is, can you walk me through, right now, our middle school kiddos who are accelerated? What's their pathway look like? Can you give me kind of an example?
To clarify, are you talking about a kid who's going in the sixth grade that's already had sixth grade math?
I'm talking about like our current, I don't know, seventh graders who are accelerated enough that what are they going to do when they're eighth graders? Now they need to be getting ninth grade math, right? They're still in the middle school buildings, but they're not physically in a high school building where they can walk down the hall to get ninth grade math. Does that make sense?
Yes, so we'll have a couple of year transition and so we're working this alongside principals now. We've kind of created a transition video that's internal and is teacher-facing to walk folks through all the what-ifs. You know, well, what if you were going to take a seven, eight next year? You still are going to take a seven, eight next year. So what if, so we have sort of a what-ifs video that's internal that principals are using with staff. We also have a what-ifs video that's family-facing that principals are invited to share with their families when they're getting those types of questions.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. I loved both halves of this presentation. So, you know, I think this is the third time this year I've said wow. But I am so impressed with everything that has gone into this. Laura, the web pages you were showing us, is that something that we have access to or the public or is it just teachers?
We can certainly give you all access to all of this. These are teacher-facing pages, but they're not secret pages, right? And so we can certainly share that information.
Yeah, because I'm really curious to see what they are. I guess it just sounds like it's going to make teachers' jobs so much easier that the, the part you spend not teaching but figuring out is a lot. And, you know, as a former teacher, I just want to look at it and go, "Oh wow, I wish we had that." But anyway. And so Laura, I also have another question. Can you tell me what you mean by calibrated practices?
So we're calibrating practices across grade levels, across teams, across schools. And by that I mean, for instance, we now know about evidence-based reading instruction for primary years, for intermediate years. And we have more of that happening across campuses, we're calibrating those. We're calibrating more of our differentiation strategies through that professional learning that hundreds of our teachers engaged in over the course of this semester and are now applying in their classrooms and actually asking for more, which we're really excited about and will be delivering that. So that's what I mean by calibrating. We're seeing more practices that are founded in the evidence-based, research-based, successful, promising practices.
Thank you, okay. Now to math. I loved everything that you said. One of the things that has bothered me for decades, and it's not here, it's our country, is, "Oh, I can't do math." And it must drive math teachers nuts too. So I really hope that we graduate students who don't say that. What else did I want to say or ask about that? No, I think that was it, right? Because other questions got asked. Yes. So thank you so much. This is just great. Makes me proud to be part of BVSD.
I'm wondering about, I think a stress I have is around elementary school kids who are falling behind and the way that there's no reason elementary school parents should worry about a kid falling behind. They should just be having fun, but it comes up a lot. And there's this sense that once you sort of get off the train, you can't get back on. And I know I hear from parents who, you know, they get called into a meeting to say like, your nine-year-old doesn't understand the concepts. And some people are understanding that they're hiring tutors at this point. But for lots of our families, obviously, there aren't outside-of-school options. So everything you've said sounds great, but I just would love to understand it practically. If you've got a fourth grader who's falling further and further behind and understanding fewer and fewer concepts, and then takes the summer to forget 30% of what they learned the year before, and then starts fifth grade, what's happening with our MTSS that's making sure that this kiddo is, is getting what they need throughout the course of that year?
You're welcome to chime in also. But that really is where the, the student support teams come together. I mean, every year, we take a new look at how students are entering that grade level. What, have they lost a percentage of what we thought they had gained in the previous year? And, or are they, are they stable with their learning? And whatever it is that teachers find out, the process of MTSS is designed specifically to bring together teams of the teachers, the administrators, others who work with the students to examine, did this, is this student just forget a few things? Do they need refresher? Do we need to put an intervention in place for a short period of time? Let's track some data, set some SMART goals, and see if, how, and if we can catch that student up. And if not, what do they need in terms of differentiated support, small group instruction? And that, it really is a team look at the beginning of the year and different touchpoints throughout the year. And so I, I hear what you're saying about, you know, students come to us every year with a different level of either having retained or lost some of their learning, or maybe have, having not learned a concept at all once they get to a certain place. And our job as the educators is to circle around that student with support, not to leave them behind, but to make sure that they're getting what they need to fill in any skill gaps so that they can have the foundation to be successful with whatever the content is.
And as we're sort of assessing the efficacy of this MTSS role, do we have some way of connecting with families like that? I, I feel like I hear often, you know, just sort of this feeling of helplessness, that kid is going to school and we're hoping things are improving, but that there doesn't feel like there's a good rope to grab when it's getting too deep. Like, how are we making sure that these families feel that the supports are working, that they're getting what they need? Other than hearing from teachers and principals, how are we hearing directly from these impacted families about whether or not our structures of support are actually supporting?
So a couple of things. I think that, I think it's a wrong approach if we have teachers pulling in parents and telling them that their kids are behind and they need to get them extra help. Like, that's our job. Right? That's wrong. We shouldn't be doing that. You know, I would say that as we've been around all of our roundtables over the past couple of years, one of the cries for help from our teachers is we need more math interventions. Right? We need more math, access to math assessments. And so we've made some progress there. You know, those MTSS guides have those types of resources and materials. I think, I think the formative assessments that we're doing are important in identifying students in regards to what they need so we can put together the MTSS plans. And yes, have we overdone it in fifth grade, fifth grade math this year? Yeah, I think that, you know, based on what I've heard from teachers giving the CMAS, then I Ready, then a middle school math assessment is probably two tests too many. But it's, you know, I, I would say for parents, if, if they feel as if they're not getting what they need, that they need to engage either with their teacher, with their principal, and just share what the challenges are. And we have district-level responses and supports now. Right? If a teacher is struggling to meet the needs of the kids, we have, we have resources. We have directors of teaching and learning, each one of our learning networks that can help and connect. You know, but this, but I do think that it's a change in practice, Lisa. I do think that there was a time where, well, if you're behind, go get a tutor, or you're not, you're never going to be where you need to be. We can't be saying that. You'll never, we'll never reach the goals we've set as a board, as, as a district around closing achievement and opportunity gaps if it's only for the people who have the means to help outside of school. Right? And if that is what, we can't do that. So, and, and these are, these are things that I think that as we've connected with community, and I've connected with community, you know, I think I've heard those things. So, you know, that, that's what I would share, that, that that response is, is something that when you create clarity around differentiation, MTSS, prioritization of standards, that, you know, my hope is you get less and less of that response. And that as we inform parents about what they're able to get from our system and expect from our system and hold us accountable to, for our system, that there's more avenues we can reach out and help individual families.
Well, I appreciate that. And yeah, I mean, I agree. And obviously, our, our teachers, you know, you've got 25, 30 kids. There's only so much I think that we can expect in terms of their ability to deal with every single kid and where they're at. And that's why systems like this are important. I feel like we're offering a lot to our teachers in terms of ways to differentiate. But to your point, just doing more family engagement feels important, too, and making sure our families know what they can do, what they can ask for, where they can go for help, et cetera. Because it can't be just our teachers trying to get all 28 kids up to speed, too, right? It has to be our families and students who are empowered to figure out those steps.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that to have an effective system, you have to empower everyone, right? So you empower teachers with the tools and resources, and empower parents with the information on the expectations of the system. Right? That these are the things that we're expecting. These are the supports that are available. And I think both of those are, are equally as important. So I appreciate the point.
Nicole? I just have one more question somewhat related to Lisa's. Differentiation is hard. And our new math curriculum does provide some, you know, targeted, explicit ways in which a teacher can differentiate. And we talked a little bit about how opportunities for teachers to learn new skills and hone their trade. I'm assuming with this new math curriculum and just generally elementary math instruction is an area in which we are focusing. Some of our schools within this district have like a fifth-grade teacher who just, who teaches math and science. And then the other teacher teaches LA and social studies. And that's something that's been used elsewhere in other schools. Is that something we are considering? Or would we ever consider to have, make sure all of our students have equally, equal access to really strong math educators at the youngest level? So we aren't having to get a tutor or, you know, having, again, having a teacher, having to differentiate in these large classrooms with multiple plans, teaching all of the content that an elementary teacher is responsible for? Are there ways that, creative ways that we're thinking about helping our teachers help our students?
I've seen this strategy work incredibly well. You know, the idea that, that, that some teachers have a higher level of competence and comfort. Right? Especially as you're getting into the fourth, fifth grade mathematical concepts. I mean, I'm not sure if we've considered that as a collective strategy, but I do believe that we allow it to happen. I don't know that we have taken a collective stance on this is the way that you should do that. But I think I'd be, I'd be open for that conversation.
Nicole, you're done. Kitty, go ahead.
I just have a comment because my younger daughter was behind in math always. And she had a lot of health problems, so she missed a lot of school. So she was at Mathnasium starting at seventh grade all the way through high school. But one of the things they had at Mathnasium that I thought was so cool was this big poster of, what do you want to be when you grow up? You want to be a firefighter? Here's all the math you need to know. You know, you want to be an astrophysicist. And it helps answer the question you always get is, why do I have to learn this? And I just thought it was really cool, so.
Can I speak to that really quickly? I'm excited to share that our newly adopted Intermath program, they launch every new unit or learning episode, you know, kind of segment of learning with exactly what you just named, which really celebrates, why should we care about this, and connects it to something really relevant? So we're excited about that.
And it helps kids who are dreamers when they're little, like, I want to be an astronaut. You know, probably they won't be because a handful of people get that. But the idea of, oh, I need to know this if I want to be whatever the thing is.
All right. Thank you all so much. And I think, Rob, we are ready to move on to our next presentation from our long-range planning committee. We'll take two.
Excited to have, to have our long-range advisory committee proposal to present to you all this evening. We have Rob Price from our Assistant Superior Operations, many of our operations team. Everybody's here. We've got CFO, we've got Jeff and Yvette, who've been so gracious in hosting and chairing our committee. And so really excited for us to dig in on this topic. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Rob Price.
Good evening, Vice President Sweeney Moran, members of the board, and Dr. Anderson. Thank you for that. I truly want to use this as a working session tonight. So we've got 29, 30 slides. So as we're going through, ask questions. You don't have to wait until the end. As you know, this committee was put together to address declining enrollment, very similar to what other districts are currently going through. Before we jump in, just wanted to introduce all of our players. There's probably some new faces here. Susan Cousins, Operations Communications Manager, Dr. Fernandez, Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Bill Sutter, CFO, Dr. De La Cruz, Deputy Superintendent Glenn Screwz, our Senior Planner, and then Jeff Anderson and Yvette Solis, both co-chairs for our Long Range Advisory Committee. Very diverse committee, very challenging conversation, as we've learned over the last, we've been meeting, I think, since September. Does that sound about right? So we're going to jump in. Now, a lot of the presentation you've seen quickly in previous board meetings. So a lot of times at board meetings, it's an information item. We're kind of buzzing through those presentations. We're going to spend a little bit more time getting into some of the detail, into the weeds tonight, but still try to stay at a high level at a district level. We're going to focus primarily on elementary schools. We're not going to get into, this is, does not include charter schools, does not include secondary schools, and does not include mountain schools. And we can talk about that a little bit more as we're going through. First half of the presentation, we're going to spend a lot of time talking about the data that we've presented to the Long Range Advisory Committee. The second half of the presentation, Jeff and Yvette are going to get into the proposal. That is before you tonight. We've given you a hard copy, and then there's also a digital copy attached to your, to board docs. So why are we even having this discussion? We've anticipated a gradual decline. That decline was accelerated significantly during the pandemic. And declining number of students leads to budget reductions and efficient facility operations. And most importantly, a less comprehensive educational experience for students at schools with smaller populations. So just a little bit of background, at our first four meetings, I've mentioned that we started meeting in September. Those first four meetings were getting grounded. We, be honest, we struggled a little bit of what was the purpose of the committee. A lot of the, a number of us were trying to focus, how do we solve declining enrollment? The other was focused on how do we respond to declining enrollment? So once we got tasked, and we'll talk through that here in a little bit, we presented a proposal to the Long Range Advisory Committee at their request. And then at the last two meetings, we really spent most of our time going through our proposal, fine-tuning that, addressing some of the current concerns and topics that came out of the committee itself. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Glenn Screwz, who'll get into some of the data.
Thanks. As Rob said, a lot of this stuff we've shared before throughout the school year. So I'm going to just touch on this and look at some background and overview. Oh, let me go back, actually. So declining enrollment is not unique to BVSD right now. It's really been a national trend. That's in the lower right corner. You can see that. Also, the state has been declining. And this slide also shows Boulder County as a whole, and even including the areas in St. Vrain, are also sliding in enrollment as well. And given the five, or the 10 largest school districts, in most of which surround us, the vast majority of those have also seen declines over the last five years, with BVSD being a little bit higher, the higher average of that. But most of those 10 are in decline. And the ones that aren't, two of them are, were really more level enrollment the last few years. The ones that have been seeing level enrollment and even some decline tend to have more new housing stock that helps them offset what, what they've been seeing in other parts of their district in their existing housing. Kindergarten is kind of where it starts. This chart is non-charter, so you may have seen something similar to this in the past. For all of the school districts, we've separated out to just the general fund schools here. We can see in 2014, it doesn't quite go that far, 2014, kindergarten starts sliding downward in enrollment and really takes a big hit in COVID. And then from there, we continue to see smaller and smaller kindergarten classes, which of course matriculate up the system and, and, and cause downward pressure on everything. And what that looks like overall, again, K-12, non-charter. We can see in 2017, the overall enrollment or for elementary starts to decline. And you can see that brings down all of the enrollment K-12. But then in addition, we start seeing middle school and high school also start to shrink in enrollment as well. And we're really starting to just see it in high school now, and are almost graduating our last really large classes at that grade level. And this is a five-year outlook, a projection, again, still non-charter. And this year-over-year loss, we're starting to see, using the trends we're seeing now, about a one and a half percent loss per year.
I have a question, Glenn. What is the most, the highest number of students we've ever had? And when was that?
I don't know the exact number, but it's, it was, I think we peaked out around 2012, 2013. It was in the low 30s. I don't think we quite, quite hit 31. That's K through 12, not counting preschool. But we, we did hit 30 briefly for a bit there.
Thank you.
And again, talking about the new housing potential in some of the other school districts throughout the state, this map shows how we're a bit more landlocked than other places. The greens and light green areas are open space and rural lands that really don't, can't entertain any, any significant development. The gray areas are, are existing development, which of course we can get some infill, but you really won't see a lot of, of development there. You can see, in fact, Boulder, you can see little blotches of red. Those are infill developments, and they're very small. The real development potential we do see are those yellow and orange blocks. And some of those are out decades. The lighter colors are, are more residential lands out into the future. But really, even what we do have available is very, very concentrated in Centaurus, with a little bit of potential in Broomfield and Monarch attendance areas. But not a lot of future potential elsewhere. The causes, overall causes for declining enrollment, of course, birth rates are the number one thing cited nationally. And, and that's something we've dealt with for quite a number of years, even before the current time. But migration rates and things like that also play into falling kindergartner classes. COVID-19 was a big impact. It's really shaken everything up, how kids learn, where they learn. Again, the migration patterns have really been shaken up. And students in some situations have been finding programs outside the school district. So that's definitely affected enrollment. And we haven't necessarily gotten all of those kids back.
Glenn, do we know how many students there are in that group that we could potentially capture? Whether it's online learners, homeschoolers, folks that have choiced into private within our catchment area? Do we have a rough estimate about what that number looks like?
Not really. I think the first two years, we tried to track as best as we could. And, and mostly using kids from the past, pre-19. I think by now, there's been so much movement, it's going to be very, very difficult. I am anxious to get nuisance's data, but again, that will be from 2020, so there will be some lag there. But I think, just looking at the numbers, it's kind of hard to put it in exact words, but you can kind of see where the blanks are. You can see things are off trend. If you go back here, oops, wrong way. You know, when we look at overall enrollment, you know, how much, or even kindergarten is even a better example. You can really see that the 21 and 22 are really off trend compared to what you see before 2019. So you can really see holes in the data. to what you see before 2019. So you can really see holes in the data where kids should be and aren't, and that's a big chunk, I think, from the COVID programming and so forth that So moving on, housing is a big component to this, dwindling housing opportunities. Both, I said, we don't have a lot of new housing availability that can come online, but the resale market's also been really slow. There has not been a lot of inventory that's been circulating with high interest rates, lots of reasons for that. A big part of it, too, in our particular area, is an aging population. You can see the chart out to the right, the percent of residents over 60 has been increasing. Those people are in their houses. People want to stay in this area. They don't tend to move on. And so we have a lot fewer opportunities for turnover in the housing market going into the future. And of course, one thing that's often overlooked, too, is, you know, we can still, in this area, there's more housing opportunities outside the district. So you can work in Boulder, but there's still reasonable commutes compared to other parts of the country to get to housing that's more available to people.
Great. I'll jump into just a real high-level touch on school funding. So the board is well aware of this, but this is more of a information for the general public. So the School Finance Act is determined by the legislature. It allocates per pupil funding, and from the October count, where the five-day window either side of October 1st, and that's referred to as total program funding. So a component of that is, the School Finance Act determines how much money a district receives. The mix of where those dollars come from is local property tax and state share. And so this is just a little reminder for folks, or it's particularly top of mind right now, but local property values determine how much the funding is generated locally. And right now, Boulder Valley is about 84% locally funded and 16% state-funded. This is prior to the adjustments related to the recent updates and valuations that folks received. And so that's important because rising property values do not increase total resources for a school district under the School Finance Act. So it's an important point that we want to get out there as we're talking about property values and impacts on funding relative to student counts. So declining student counts do not lower property tax bills, per se. It's a reduction in how much money the School Finance Act produces, but that mix means just more of the dollars as a percentage are coming from the local property taxes. Then the school district allocates those resources to schools based on size, level, programs, all the needs that go into a particular school and students and demographics. So these are funding constraints that we're operating with and that are mandated and governed by state law, as well as constitutional amendments. And it's, the whole context for this is just that there are limited resources to meet the needs of all students, and these are the constraints within which we operate. We do not have the ability to generate unlimited funding for all the needs and desires within the district.
Bill, can you just touch a little bit more on this idea that, you know, why rising property values do not increase resources for a school district, and how that 84% local and 16% state, that that ratio, depending upon how many, how much local taxes that we generate, we just then get less funding from the state?
Exactly correct. So with, again, within the School Finance Act, the per pupil allocations multiplied by the number of students that are in a district create that total program funding, the dollar amount that the district has to operate on, and then the mix of where those funds come from. As more revenue is generated locally from property tax, that just means the state is able to reduce the amount that is their portion of the total program funding.
So just to summarize, the state has mandated that all school districts get the 27 mils, and those dollars generated by those mils go to the, to fund the School Finance Act.
Correct.
They don't come directly to the district. And then the state uses that money and then offsets it with general funds from the state, and depending on how much money you generate, depends on how much you get from the state, to the point where we could be potentially fully funded 100% by local property taxes. But that doesn't still, that still doesn't mean we get to keep all the local property taxes.
Right. After you fully fund the School Finance Act, then you start funding the categorical programs, CTE funding, second language learner funding, the special education. So then you start filling in those gaps and eventually completely eliminate the burden on the state. There are some districts that are like that in the state. They tend to be much smaller districts, or heavily oil and gas, property-rich districts, or say in Aspen, for example, very high property values with not too many students. But we're, we will be pretty close to being fully funded after the results of the, these recent updates and valuations take place.
So I'm a little bit concerned about this proposal to adjust assessment rates and the amount of money taxpayers are going to have to pay, only because the state has a history of funding its budget on the backs of public education. And so their commitments to hold us harmless, I'm a little bit worried about. Question, are we ever able to, once we hit the 27 mils, which I feel like is next year, we're really close to this year, can we ever exceed that and ask our voters for more, or is that like, that is absolutely at our max?
So the 27 mils is for the School Finance Act. The overrides, let me back up, the 27 mils is what the state determined was the uniform mill levy that they were going to apply. The actual mill number that the state could go to is the mill amount that was in place when the district debruised, which most districts did this back in the, like, late 90s. Cherry Creek just did it last year, I think. But, so there's the possibility for that to go higher. I think that would be potentially unpopular, to say the least, at the moment. But, so that's School Finance Act. The mill levy overrides, which are also governed by state statute, there's some specific overrides that exist, like the operations and technology and transportation that have specific things that you can spend those dollars on. The general mill levy override is limited, under state statute, right now to 25% of that total program funding. So we are at that maximum, 25%. So there's nothing for us to ask for under the general mill levy override at this point.
That's what I want to clarify. We are tapped out of asking for more at this point in time.
There's some opportunity within the transportation override. We are at a fixed dollar amount that was set back in 2005, when we passed that, at 7.2 million. And also, we can increase the operations and technology mill levy, which is a fixed mill, at four mils. But that, again, is also constrained by the types of expenses that you can spend those dollars on. So there's a little opportunity there, but nothing to the extent of the $10 million that occurred in 98 and 15, or maybe it was 15 million in 98. So they were big dollar amounts back then. It's much smaller now. That's it.
All right. In response to the declining enrollment challenge, the board appointed the Long Range Advisory Committee. And as a reminder, the charge that we were given in, I believe it was BDFF, if I remember, it's right here, BDFF, develop recommendations to ensure sound, long-term facility decisions consistent with the needs of the school district and in support of the school district's strategic initiatives. So that's the policy that we were operating under. We needed a little bit more clarity, so the clarity that we provided to the Long Range Advisory Committee was, it was an opportunity to develop metrics and guiding principles for the board to use in future decision-making related to addressing how declining enrollment impacts staff and student experiences and district finances. As a reminder, it was not, the four bullet points underneath, it was not an opportunity to solve declining enrollment. It was not an opportunity to solve affordable housing or generate marketing ideas or address declining birth rates. Just to clarify that. Mr. Sutter?
Back to me. So just to, again, some high-level thoughts on the financial constraints related to this. So for each 1% drop in enrollment, which is about 300 students, is roughly a $3 million reduction in the funding. So just as a reminder, the way the School Finance Act works with increases for inflation, there could be a net increase in dollars coming into the district. The total amount of the inflation is just offset by whatever reduction in enrollment there is. So if there's a 2% increase in inflation and you have a 1% decline in enrollment, you wind up with a net increase of 1% in funding. So that translates also into about 12 teacher FTE in our standard staffing formulas. The enrollment declines that are, so that's global on the school district. As enrollment declines at a particular school, those fixed costs that exist are distributed over fewer students, which increases the inefficiencies and the cost per student. Disproportionate resources are required to maintain smaller schools, which diverts funds from other student and district needs. And as the number of small schools increases, the proportion of the general fund that's allocated to subsidize the smaller school, smaller schools becomes a larger and larger dollar amount. So as we've talked many times, the district's budget is about trade-offs, which, or you spend, you can only spend money once. So if you spend it on supporting staffing and those resources at smaller schools, it's not able to be spent elsewhere in the budget. So the fixed costs for a school are things like administration, operational, custodians, food service utilities, building maintenance, things like that. That nonlinear staffing is slower to adjust. So whereas the teachers are more direct-line staffing, things like custodians that are based on square footage, they don't really change with the fewer students in a building. And then there's some instructional resources that are not as straight-line as a teacher in a classroom, because they're more allocated on a per-school basis with some very large stair steps in the change in resources. And there are things like counselors, interventionists, and some of the teacher librarians. So again, these are, we'll get to a little more detail on what the dollars look like, but just a reminder that there's some more straight-line staffing impacts, and it's these, the things that are not as straight-line that are, increase the cost when you have a smaller, smaller school with fewer students in it.
I have a question about that. I feel like a long time ago, I saw a document that showed the relative operational costs of each of our school buildings themselves, some school buildings having a higher operational cost than others. Is that information that you shared with the L-RAT committee, or something that you're considering as in far, as far as moving forward, the cost of operating?
A particular school?
Over another, like the, like if it's inefficient, or if some of the costs to operate are a little bit higher due to age or...
Are you referring to maintenance costs or operating costs? I think you're referring to maintenance costs. No, we did not share that. No, no. And those are more, it varies up and down, depending on what, depending on what type of work we're doing at that particular site. The year we did that study was when we were having a discussion on University Hill and what decision to make then. So very dependent on the year, but definitely something we can pull over a period of time.
I wanted to comment, the second...
Jeff, will you turn on your microphone?
All right, I do, hell. The second of the important considerations on your printed document on the top of page four directly addresses that point. We didn't look at data for particular schools, but it notes that you should take that under consideration if you go with these recommendations.
And I think that piece of, that would be a very helpful piece of information.
So thinking about individual school enrollment, we'll start by talking about three-round elementary schools. Three-round, meaning three classes at each grade level. And that's because traditionally in BVSD, that has been our most common elementary school structures to have three classes at each grade level. Therefore, over time, we have also traditionally then built our other structures to match that standard. For example, special schedules or FTE allocation formulas. So going a little bit further into detail about special schedules. You may remember, several years ago, we created the ABC specials rotation, this being equal instructional time in elementary of art, music, and PE. And it was designed at that time for specials teachers to be full-time at three-round schools. Also, our funding formulas are based on that three-round standard. So in a three-round school, we see a full-time library media teacher, a full-time counselor, full-time clerical, and of course, full-time principal. And all of these staff members are full-time in their one school. So what that means is that the master schedules of these schools are not based on traveling teacher availability, or, you know, logistical concerns, but rather are instructional decisions because these professionals are all full-time in their one three-round school and accessible to staff and students all day, every day.
It's important to acknowledge and understand the programmatic impacts at an elementary school with an enrollment of approximately 225 students, which we would consider a one-and-a-half round school. As a reminder, a round means a grade-level class. So one round at second grade is one class at second grade. Two rounds at second grade means two classes at second grade, and so on. So a one-round school is a school with one class at every grade level. A two-round school has two classes at every grade level. A one-and-a-half round school occurs when a school has too few students for two full rounds and too many for one round. Therefore, one-and-a-half rounds can mean that we can only address student numbers with a .5 FTE or a half-time teacher. At the classroom level, this requires the school into creative solutions with that .5 FTE, such as multi-age classes and classes that are made smaller for half the day or half the week with that .5 FTE. There are also impacts on non-classroom teachers, such as traveling or itinerant teachers, instruction constrained by scheduling limitations and programming limitations. Taking a look at some of the nuances, we can see the programmatic impacts due to other FTE allocations, such as a .5 teacher librarian, a .5 counselor, a .5 PE, music, art teacher, and fewer instrumental music options. We do, of course, assign special education as needed for students with IEPs and paraeducator support as needed per student number and special education needs. For instance, ILCs require a certain funding formula to make sure that we are providing adequate paraeducator support. We also do maintain a 1.0 school office manager and principal, with the exception of Jamestown and Gold Hill. and Gold Hill.
So are those allocations centrally allocated or can a site choose, for example, this is not, I'm not advocating for this, but to forego a half-time counselor in lieu of having a full-time media specialist?
At this time, do you want to respond to that, Rob?
Sure. At this time, all of our counselors remain full.
Well, I don't mean counselors specifically. I just mean...
You mean converting?
Yes. Is that, is that a central, is that a centralized decision that these schools have a .5 counselor, a .5 media specialist, .5 art? Or can a site choose, you know, I can do without the counselor, but I really need a media specialist full-time? I'm just curious.
So the FTE is allocated formulaically. And then sometimes we engage in some conversations with schools based on individual needs. However, as a general rule, these are buckets that, for the most part, remain whole because we know that our focus is on delivering robust programming for students in every school.
So they don't have the unlimited ability to convert? If that makes sense, right? And so I've worked in districts where it's site-based budgeting, you know, principal gets the money, right? And then you buy the positions to kind of make it work. And then, and then when times are tough, you know, some schools decide, well, we're going to do without a counselor, or we're going to go without a media specialist, or we're going to go, we're going to multi-age some classes, or we're going to, you know, some of those things. But, you know, that is, we're not site-based budgeted. We allocate FTE. Any of those conversions have to go through our team. But we haven't gotten to the place yet where folks are able to just convert. And because of our contracts and our negotiated agreements, right, and some instances board direction, right, in regards to the counseling piece, right, because I believe that was something that came into the board, you know, we haven't, we haven't moved to that place.
May I ask folks to talk right into their microphones, please? Because I have a hard time hearing.
So as we look forward to projections in the coming years, we can see on this slide that the number of schools with fewer than two classes at each grade level is projected to increase from five to 10 to 12. And by 2027, there will be three elementary schools with fewer than 1.5 rounds.
Just to clarify one thing, though, as you're looking at the metrics, this slide doesn't tie to the metrics because this doesn't have utilization date on it. Just to make sure, if you're trying to make ties to the work that we've gotten our proposal to this...
Doesn't what?
This only talks about number of rounds. But when you look at our proposal that Jeff and Yvette will present here in a little bit, that has two different metrics in it: utilization and number of rounds. So just don't want any of the board members to try to tie this to our proposal.
For any of our public that's not watching the Nuggets game right now and is tuning into this meeting, I wonder if you could share, as we've been to teacher round tables and talked to people in the community, the challenges that are very real and exist right now in our schools that are one-and-a-half rounds on staffing and on community challenges? Because those come up frequently.
The big challenge is around expectations, right? I think that, to the extent when we follow our formulas that are, that are laid out in our budget book and we, and that we negotiated with our associations, that if you follow those, that those realities, you know, relate to class sizes potentially that folks think are too big, right? They want them smaller. They result in not-whole services. So you have the longtime teacher librarian that's been at a school for a long time and all of a sudden that position gets reduced to a half-time. And then it becomes about, hey, we've got to save, you know, our teacher librarian, so let's go and push for more and additional funding. You think about the counseling aspect where, you know, you've got increased mental health needs, you know, of, in schools within our community, but our formula is student-driven, right? And so when those get reduced because you have less students, the students there might have greater needs. And so I think in the past in our district, because we've had small numbers of smaller schools, less than two full rounds, mostly three full rounds, these were treated as one-offs. And I think over time, some of those advocacy efforts worked, right? Where folks would come to the board, come to schools, hey, we need this, all, everybody, all the parents, let's go to the Board of Education, we have these challenges and issues. If we advocate for this, maybe they'll help us out. You know, I think that this conversation and the new reality for BVSD is that when you have more and more schools that are facing some of these challenges, the ability to patch them over and smooth them over with the hope that more kids are going to show becomes less and less viable. So I would say that we did a lot of teacher round tables, those of you that went to, with those to me. Every teacher round table that we did after we released FTE, 90% of the conversations were, we don't, we can't lose any of our people, right? We don't, well, we can't, we don't want to lose any of our people, right? Whether it's because it's a great person or it's because they can't imagine the work with less students. And that's, that's the challenge. All right. So this slide gets into a little more detail. This is just a model. This is not a particular school. This is just sort of saying if we had the perfect number of students in a school that were at the maximum class size that's determined in the BVEA contract, that would, and it's different at kindergarten and fifth grade. So this is a maximum class sizes that are allowed. And the base cost is the, that teachers and custodians and principals, it's the whole mix of everything. Then breaking it down on a per-pupil basis and then showing the difference between a three-round as being sort of the base scenario. And then as you go to a two-round, it's a little bit more expensive on a per-student basis. And then on a one-round is where it really starts to jump up. Now, we have a four-round school on there, which there aren't many of our buildings that are actually sized for a four-round, but it just sort of helps put some scale to it that if you have larger schools, you actually do get more efficiencies. Not suggesting that's what we want to do, but just to put some relative size to it. So Rob kind of stole my thunder a little bit about talking of transitioning to a different funding model. So a student-based budgeting or a site-based budgeting, as Rob mentioned, which is more dollar-based, so it's a per-pupil funding and schools purchase those services, is, it's utilized by districts here in Colorado. It has certainly some challenges that go along with it. And if we think it's challenging now with the number of teachers and different staff that we move around because of changing contracted FTE that we have with an individual, the more flexibility and changes that schools are allowed to initiate on their own would just sort of ramp that up even more significantly as we have relatively small schools compared to some other districts that are built and designed that way. So again, this is a model, just showing the relative comparison of, of those different size schools.
Do we have any four-round schools? I know we have.
Had in the past, not anymore.
In the past, we had some that had four rounds at each grade level, no longer.
My daughter was in a five-round kindergarten. You know, she was a lump inside millennials.
And just as an aside, coming from two districts that had mass, most of the elementary schools were 1,000 kids, you lose something in that experience as well. You know, you might be efficient, right? I might be more efficient, but, you know, bigger isn't necessarily better.
And this was fireside before Monarch opened. So it was like 725 students and they had classes, pull-out classes in closets. So it wasn't, it wasn't a good idea.
Majority of our elementary schools are three-rounds. We've got a lot of small elementary schools compared to other districts. Just, it is what it is. Before I turn it over to Jeff and Yvette, I just want to lay a little bit of groundwork about how we got to the proposal. So we, staff and a number of members from our Long Range Advisory Committee spent a significant amount of time trying to learn from other districts. One thing is very apparent: you have to have a community process. Whatever decisions are made, this is going to be painful, right? So I just want to make that very clear. So as you're reading through it, I feel like tonight is our first step in bringing our community along in this conversation. A lot of our communities, you start looking at certain schools or school communities, don't even know they're considered a small school because we've never given the board the information. And part of the process that we're going to talk about tonight is how do we start getting the board informed, giving you the information on an annual basis, and then bringing our community along with that? So just please know, as we're going through this, we have spent a lot of time learning, trying to understand what districts have done, why they made the decisions they've made in order to guide the process that we have in front of you tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to Yvette and Jeff.
At multiple meetings, the committee discussed draft metrics and recommendations that were proposed by staff. We, as a collective group, we sat there and asked for very specific metrics, like what are these schools', you know, specific areas, like how many new housing developments are coming in, how many are going to be affordable housing? And there was, every person that was in this committee had a different background. So we each had our own ideas and our own need for questioning, like why this, why that, and our own experiences with our own children. We had several principals in there, which was really helpful to get that detailed information from them on why. So that was really helpful. We asked the staff to develop the suggested language on what they exactly were looking for because we kind of got overloaded with the data. I mean, it was a lot of data. And so we were wanting to make sure that we had the information on exactly what they're looking for, what you were looking for, and what we should be providing. And so we asked Rob and the rest of the staff if they could just work on developing an idea and then we could kind of tweak it and work from there. The suggested metrics are utilization and class grade-level data points that would indicate when the district might consider taking action. Those recommendations aim to describe what actions we might take. So in looking at the, the different rounds, when they fell below and that sort of thing. And we wanted to make sure that what we put together was just something that when you look at it, it's not, this is exactly what we're doing, but where we could really consider all the different factors that are involved in the declining enrollment at one specific school. So, did I turn off? Sorry. Board members, you've been given hard copies of the metrics and recommendations developed by the committee. We'll walk through them right now. The first recommendation is for staff to begin providing an annual update to the board regarding our school utilization that starts in February of 2024. That report is going to include the number of classes per grade level and the rounds and the five-year enrollment projections for each of the individual schools.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
How do we land on February as the, the point in time to update?
That had to do with providing that information, making it available so we don't get the detailed finalized student data till November, and then we have to process it in December and do projections for district-wide by January. So it's about February before we can get it for every single school.
So you had mentioned, Rob, that this is for elementary, non-charter elementary, not mountains, all of your caveats. Is the reason that we're only looking at elementary because that's where the root starts? And is there going to be a time in the future that you also look at middle school and high schools? Or are we just going to concentrate on elementary?
Great question. No, we felt like elementary is where the impacts are felt the greatest. Next phase of the Long Range Advisory Committee, the idea is we wanted to obtain feedback tonight. We have another meeting on Monday. We'll take that feedback to the committee. And then next school year, we will start focusing on secondary schools, including middle and high.
I had a similar question about middle school. And then on the opposite end, I noticed preschool is not listed in here at all. We have a shift in our preschool program. Not all of our schools offer preschool programs at their schools. Preschools can become sticky. People choose a preschool, they might stay for kinder and they might stay for K3, 4, or 5, whether it's in public or in our schools. Was there any consideration into weaving in where space allows onsite pre-K at all of our elementary schools? I think of, in my catchment area, they have to go to Mapleton instead of at their elementary, where they would go for elementary schools. So any consideration on the impacts of pre-K on this?
So, so, you know, we're about to start the universal pre-K, so that's one place to start. And again, preschool operates in a very different fashion. It's not, they don't have to define enrollment areas like the other grade levels. And they're basically placed based on where, where there's availability, not necessarily where the kid lives. So there isn't necessarily a smooth flow into the other grade levels. And they all, and the capture rate for preschool is also much, much lower than kindergarten and the other rates. There's a lot more competition with private providers and things like that. So that was something that really, given the funding formulas we looked at, we really had to split out and, and do what we've been doing, at least in the past with preschool, providing space for them where, where as best we can meet demand.
So we were briefed in detail at, I believe, our second meeting on preschool and everything else. I think it's important to clarify that we are not trying to tell the board exactly how to fix these problems right now either, and we did not go into detail on those solutions. What we are giving the board is an early warning system and some suggestions about some possible things to look at. But the key point here, and Yvette will give more detail in a minute, is to make sure that you're not caught off guard by the situations that are going to force you to make these difficult decisions. But we're not telling you today and possibly ever how to make those difficult decisions.
If the annual report indicates that an elementary school has fewer than two classes per grade level and enrollment is less than 60% of capacity, then a school will be designated as a small school. The elementary school will operate under the following conditions. Resource allocation will adhere to the established staffing, staffing fund, staff-funding formula to the greatest extent possible. And then multi-age classrooms may be necessary to meet the funding formula. Library, counseling, and specials might be limited. This designation lets families and staff know what to expect in terms of resource allocations for the school. For example, the part-time teachers or multi-age classrooms are a possibility. And I think one of the reasons why we had talked about that was because at some of the board meetings, you know, we had heard that parents were upset about not knowing things ahead of time. So we wanted to make sure that the community was always given that same information ahead of time.
Go ahead, Nicole.
Do you want to go first or you raise your hand here? So I find this hard to imagine and unwinding. So you go to back-to-school night and the principal tells the community, due to our size and the budgetary implications, we might have to dial back these services. And I worry that our families that have the resources or the ability to drive their kids elsewhere will bail if they find out they don't potentially have a librarian or a counselor or access to the full complement of elective courses that we have, we have said and we have highly prioritized within this school district. And then what happens is you have fewer students... And then what happens is you have fewer students in the school that then, you know, that end up being more the folks that cannot opt out, cannot choice out. And then they're more highly disproportionately, highly impacted by the lack of some of those services. And that spiral will then continue. So I'm a little bit worried about what happens, how that information is presented, and then what happens when parents who have a high degree of choice in this community decide to make choices that are different for their students? And what does, how does that contribute to equitable learning opportunities for our elementary schools in that tier-one scenario?
So this concern was repeated through multiple meetings in the committee, and you'll see later on, our guiding principles equity, and that was one that was there. I think we discussed a lot about the fact that covering this up doesn't make that go away, and these are not going to be a secret in the long term. And when you see the calendar, there is an attempt to try to buffer that. But this is a very legitimate concern. I don't think that the committee felt that we had walked around that. You can't get away from that fear of, my school is going, you know, my school is going to have a declining performance. And so exactly how the board deals with that is something I don't think we had a clear answer on. Maybe staff has a different feeling.
No, I think you bring up a good point, Jeff. Education, the whole experience is eye of the beholder, is what we learned through this process. Depending on if you're a teacher at a small school, if you're a teacher at a three-round school, the experience is much different. And that's what we, I felt like we struggled with as a team, is because what we thought at times of around a one-and-a-half round school, what that experience might be like, not having that counselor there five days a week, but that counselor's there two days a week. The teacher at that school didn't see a limitation to that. They didn't see that that was limiting for any of their students. So this is, when we set this metric, this is around, I'm not going to say a word, I don't have a better word to say, subsidizing. At some point, we can't continue to subsidize every small school. Right? So the idea here is, is they, the community starts to understand that they're going to have to operate as a small school or accept multi-age teaching. We can't continue to throw staff at those schools. So that, the metrics were put in place with that understanding that if families are, if they decide to go to that school under the small school designation, they're willing to accept. You want to?
I just, my fear is that that will quickly deteriorate into then what you have labeled two-tier. And then is there just benefit at starting at that point, given the transient nature of our community?
I will say a couple things. First and foremost, I do think that being transparent is incredibly important. Right? That, to Rob's point, right, we can't pretend this isn't happening, right? But we're not in a position today where we're amid crisis, right? We feel like that we've got the timing right, that this is the time to start having these conversations. Like Bill said, you can spend money anywhere you'd like, you just can't spend it on everything. You can only spend it on, you know, the things you prioritize. You spend it once, no coupons, no double coupons for school funding, regardless of how many small schools you have. I think the timing feels okay, in the sense that this isn't like you're showing up for the first day of school, and then we're making all these announcements, right? These things would happen in February-ish, right? That's when we would make the designation. And as the presentation and the recommendation goes further, it'll talk about what happens after that. I mean, you could argue some of this is already happening. Right? Like, you know, this is, I mean, but not everybody has the intel. Right? So it's probably inequitable today. Right? The parents in the know, the parent's super involved, they talk to the principal, they get the scoop, they're at the DAC meeting, right? So I would imagine there's inequities on the information today. At a minimum, this makes the information, everybody gets it. Right? So, but I think that the concerns, Nicole, that you're sharing are legitimate. However, we're not in a crisis situation today. If we don't do something and have a process and start moving towards this, we could put ourselves in a position where we're not able to meet our compensation commitments, or you have to, you know, some of the class sizes get even bigger, or, you know, you're reducing services at the central office that schools have come to rely on, or create the quality control, or have triggered some of the improvements and outcomes that we've seen, because we've had extra bandwidth to improve out, improve conditions, build infrastructures and so forth. So I would say that some of this is probably happening today, but, you know, as this board, I know that transparency is one of your core values, you know, being honest and open with our community. And so I appreciate that aspect of this.
Beth? I'll hold for now. Thanks. Well, I'll go then. Yeah, I think transparency is important. I think clearly, to your point, we don't want to cover it up. It's not going to make a difference. I do think there are larger questions as well around open enrollment in general. We have excellent neighborhood schools in BVSD, and we have people who are driving their children all the way across the city because they think another school has a slight edge in a math program or a slightly better arts program, and it's not fantastic. And when we're looking at these recommendations and these metrics, I definitely feared neighborhood schools closing or having, you know, other negative effects occur, not because there aren't enough children in the neighborhood, but because our open enrollment policy is encouraging flight out of neighborhoods to other schools from schools that are fantastic in the first place. And I know we clearly have some laws around how open enrollment works, et cetera, but I do think that we have to be examining whether there are ways that we can be not only discouraging, frankly, open enrollment for folks that don't need it, but also pointing out to people just how fantastic each of our schools are, and that there are really very few reasons to be open enrolling from one neighborhood school to another.
During a lot of our work sessions where we were in different groups, we did discuss, you know, not only was it important to make sure that we are transparent and we're letting schools know ahead of time and the community, but we, it was also giving the community a good amount of time where they could start working on fundraising to maybe supplement some of that decrease in funding. And I've seen it at my son's school, when he was in kindergarten, they didn't have enough money for a full-time librarian. And then we fundraised like crazy to come up with the rest of the money, so that could be a .75 FTE. So that's the one thing that we did talk about, is that it gave the community time to fundraise before we got to that point.
And that's another inequity that is already existing in this community, that the community's trying to address.
I just want to add, that might have been talked about in small groups, but not agreed upon as a committee. We did not encourage that as a committee. I just want to, so there's a lot of items talked about in small groups. That's not what we're trying to encourage, is for parents to go out and fundraise for staffing, et cetera.
I didn't think you could fundraise for a certified position.
We have a policy that clearly defines what you can and can't fundraise for. The board has a policy. And Lisa, to your point in regards to open enrollment, in regards to inequities or perceived inequities amongst programming at schools, I think our previous presentation, it just magnifies the importance of, you know, when we're thinking about math pathways, pathways, getting access everywhere, creating, you know, a level playing field so neighborhoods, so people know and understand that these are the basic services that we have in neighborhood schools. So I want to let our folks kind of get through the recommendations, and then we can kind of deepen the discussion on some of this other stuff.
I'm just going to jump in here, because there's one point I've tried to get staff to put in stuff, and it just hasn't quite happened that's related to this. And that is that we ended up, again, focusing here on elementaries, and it's really a fairly local thing that we're recommending. There's mentions of, you have to consider this as a neighborhood, you have to consider neighboring schools. But another process that many committee members think the district should push forward is also a district-wide look at this problem, and that is not included in these particular recommendations. As an example, a study of what flexibility we have in open enrollment, which we discussed at several of the committee meetings, and how you could possibly use that to have some board control over this migration from schools, was just one of the things that has to really be viewed in a holistic fashion across the district. We did not do that. There was so much to do, we did not do that. But in the future, I think we would like you to consider whether that's something else you should look at.
And I had mentioned this at your last presentation. I would like that to include looking at the boundaries of where the home schools are. There could be some easy ways to kind of normalize where the populations are based on that, so.
There's a few things, systemically, I think, that we can look at as we begin to tackle this problem. I think today, we're looking at, you know, the information, and when a school gets to a point, how to communicate that, and then how do you begin to engage community? That's the highlight. But board members, I'll remind you, you have an open enrollment policy that is your policy, that you can change and adjust within the laws. Right? You can set attendance boundaries. Right? We can move and change and adjust and enhance academic programming at schools. We already have that. Right? Like, there are things, systemically, that we are able to have lots of controls over and live within our means in regards to our budget. And those, before this is all said and done, will probably be part of that solution. Right? And so to Jeff's point, right, you've got to start somewhere, right? Where, you know, this is a massive problem. We know the immediate impacts are going to be these, you know, however many schools that begin to get really, really small. But that doesn't mean that you fix, that the solution is just to fix one thing at a time. You will have to think systemically. The great news and the work ahead is that we have these things that we've set over time for a different time for this school district that served us well. Right? We have staffing, we have all the controls. It's just, there's going to be a lot of work, and this certainly is the first step. So, Rob, I'll turn it back over to you.
IPN Elementary Schools enrollment continues to decline below 50% capacity and fewer than 1.5 average classes per grade level. With the projected trend to continue for at least five years, then a community engagement process will be initiated. The board will engage staff to lead a community-based process to develop possible solutions to provide a thriving, well-resourced educational environment for students and staff. Decision-making should be in the context of looking at geographic areas or multiple schools if appropriate. Time will be established by the board. This process may result in recommendations that could include, but are not limited to: one, continuing with small school status, tier-one operating conditions, focus or specialized programming, reallocate grade levels within neighboring schools, changes to open enrollment references and consolidate with adjacent schools.
Thanks. I just had a quick question about this, after the two recommendations. So we have a tier-one and a tier-two. What was the thinking behind having two different tiers? Why not go just directly to tier-two? Like, why have that step in between?
One was, is just to alert families, alert schools, school communities where they're at in the process before we jump right into a community process. I mean, again, all we're attempting to do here is put a process to gather community input. And if you look at surrounding districts, one of the reasons this process has failed is decisions are being made by the district without, with very, very little community input. So our advice to you would be is involve the community in these decisions. It's going to be challenging either way. Right? But...
And to be fair, this was the staff's doing, so we asked them to develop this, and they did most of it. But, that being said, we pushed them hard on these things. I think the other thing about the two tiers relates to a question you asked earlier. You can view tier-two as being the panic tier. We got a real problem. We got to do something. Okay? There's no time to plan, there's no time to do all this stuff. Tier-one is that we might have a problem. Okay? The danger of that, as you pointed out, is, well, people say, now we're going to have a problem. But it does at least give you the chance to, we might have a problem here, but it's not this year. We've got time to be creative and look at things. So I think that was actually quite resourceful on the part of staff, and the committee, the non-staff part of the committee was quite supportive of the idea.
And I appreciate that transparency piece, and I think that's something we absolutely have to navigate. So one thing here is, and again, thinking about the district levers that we can pull, between now and when this happens, I would advocate for us using Magellan strategies or somebody to get a lot of data from our community about what kinds of programs might they want. What types of schools, what might they be willing to sacrifice or not? What do they want their school to look like? How, what are the importance of transportation, neighborhood boundaries? Do I choose to open a roll because I can take a safer bike path than I can, like, a bus route? Like, what does our community actually want? Why are they moving? Why are they leaving us? Why are they coming back? Like, getting to the whys, so we can, when a school gets here, we can say, hey, this is what we know. This is what we know our, the broad community or your micro-community might be interested in, to help guide that conversation. Because I could see this going to a PTO, or having the board having to try to make a decision the last time, and it feels extra heated when you don't have concrete information, like, what does your community, what might these communities want? Having that ahead of time, before we even get to tier-two, I think would be incredibly important for us as a board to understand for the levers we need to pull, and for those communities to have a conversation about what might actually be viable to keep this school thriving, or this community thriving, if it has to be consolidated to another facility, because programs can exist in any facility when done well. But having some of that information well in advance, I think, would be a great service.
Well, to that point, Jeff and Yvette, can we hear more from you about your proposal here around the community timeline and your guiding principles?
For sure. I think we've mostly covered the proposed timeline at this point. You've heard the reasons for why it is. And so basically, you start after the enrollment data is available for a particular year, you work through the spring and the summer on addressing what actions the board wants to take, and then you implement those actions starting in the following school year. And if you look at this timeline, of course, everything is repeated here for the standard stuff. The new stuff is only shown for one example, but you would, again, have to review this every year moving forward, both the status of schools that might be on a particular tier, and then reviewing the additional schools that could come in. So that's the basic idea behind the timeline. Again, it was primarily driven by, we can't do anything until we have the data, and the sooner you can do stuff once you have the data, the better, so. So the guiding principles, many of these have already come up in the discussion, and many of them are the board's guiding principles. Equity and access are the most important thing we considered. And in fact, there was much discussion about how far we could drive this on the equity side of things. There was, it was a tremendously diverse and powerful committee that got put together, and so there were a lot of people that had deep concern about this. And so there was lots of conversation on that. You already brought up one example of how populations with challenges could be further challenged by this, and it's an important thing for the board to consider those issues. We just heard a call for data. One of the things that happened with this committee is that, in its diversity, we had a lot of data geeks like me, and a lot of people with actual social skills, like Yvette, and also some data skills in Yvette's case. And so putting those people together was not the most efficient use in the long term, but it was a great way to get the full pulse of the community. I think paying deep attention to the data is someplace where there's a lot of room to learn a lot of things that can be helpful here. The mountain schools are difficult. I think the board understands that, and staff certainly understands that. These rules wouldn't make sense there unless you're going to do something that I don't think you want to do. The decisions, again, should try to maximize the efficient use of resource for students across the district, but also within the individual communities, where this first part is focused on. Again, I wanted to stress this is an early warning system. You look at other districts, I've done some studies outside of the metro area, too, on the type of cataclysms that can result if you just put your head in the sand and don't pay attention to this. So having open discussions, again, a board thing was a guiding principle here, that openness was an important part of this. And that, however open you're going to be, no one's going to solve these hard challenges for you. It's always going to be hard. What you want to do is be able to deal with that complexity in a way that doesn't lead to your community disintegrating in some way. And so that's really what we were looking for. There's a note here that municipalities need to be included, and so they have a lot of their own resources and other things put into this. A last thing that we also came to before, it's in one of the final things in the written report, is that there's certainly considerations here about particular facilities. Some facilities are more costly and may become more costly, so that stuff needs to come into the conversation, too. I believe that is, the three additional considerations here, clearly, transportation comes into play as you change where populations need to be. So you've got to move students around. There are a number of challenges there I think you've already had to deal with. Those would go up. We just mentioned the concern about future building costs and maintenance. And then environmental sustainability, which also, I think, is a really foundational part of being part of Boulder Valley, busing people further, using old and efficient buildings, any of these things have their own footprints. And so those were things that we thought were important to consider. And I believe that is it for the formal presentation. And I believe that is it for the formal presentation.
Stacy?
Rob, were you gonna say something? Okay. My question is about this tier-two situation. Who decides that it's, that it's a tier-two situation? Is it the community? Is it you? Is it the long-range planning committee? Because it says here that it, the capacity declines below 50%, and that projections are at least five years. You're not gonna wait five years to make it tier-two. So, what, who decides that? That it's tier-two?
So, that would be part, that information would be part of the annual report that we provide to you in February. So, we would go off of that information in order to start that community process.
And, and it would be the five-year projection at that point, given the information that, that Glenn had. So, the capacity's gonna be the capacity. Right? And then, and then the, the projection's gonna be the projection.
So, the tier-one, a tier-one could turn into a tier-two within six months? Because you're gonna possibly tell the tier-one schools that they're tier-one in the fall, and then by February, they could be at a tier-two situation, based on the data that we get?
So, to clarify, this is a purely data-driven process as described, and so at that date, and once the enrollment numbers are available, this could just be an algorithm on a computer, although I'm sure Glenn would guide it. And at that time, a school is tier-one or tier-two by this algorithm, and your status cannot change until the next year, and so, that tier assignment, if you will, occurs in February each year for schools.
So, here's what I'm, I'm hearing, and board members, please correct me if I'm hearing this, if I'm not hearing this accurately. Right? So, I'm, so I'm hearing that everybody feels, or I'm, I'm just, you know, just, think I'm hearing, everybody agrees with the idea of being transparent. Like, they, we agree on the idea that, that, that we can't hide from this. Right? We can't, you know, try to make these issues go away without the funds to do that. I'm hearing some concern around the tier-one designation and the impacts of being a tier-one designation, and I think that we've, you know, that, you know, folks in the know know that, they know that in the community, and other folks don't. But the piece that's not in here, that I've heard some conversation around, is the information gathering, like, like, do you sit around from tier-one and wait till you get to tier-two? Or how, systemically, what are the things that you can do in an information-gathering way to better prepare you, right, to, to prepare for, for, you know, the inevitable? If, if, if folks decide to leave, then they, you know, and then, and then we have to think about that. So, as I'm hearing and thinking about the feedback that, as a, as a collective, you are, you're gonna give to Rob and to the committee, is, is to start to contemplate, it's this, at least what I'm feeling is, when tier-one happens, what systems, like, system-level triggers, right, do you start to look at that could be localized or gather information from the entire community? As a piece that would enhance this potential proposal?
I have a question about, another one about tier-one, because it talks about fewer than 1.5 rounds, and a projected trend to continue for at least five years. So, how does that projected trend fit into the algorithm?
Well, I think the algorithm Jeff's mentioning is the projections and the projection methodology. So, i- it's one and the same, right? It's, that is the methodology.
So, how do I ask this? So, what if you're at one and a half rounds, but there is, for some strange reason, a projection of increased students coming, and is, is it just from that, the district boundaries of that particular school?
So, the projections take on a few things, it's the boundaries, what's going on in the boundaries, it takes into account of birth in the boundaries, and what, it also takes into account open enrollment, basically historical enrollment, open enrollment patterns, ins and, ins and outs, and then also new development as well. So, new development could be pouring in. So, it is possible that, that schools could be outside, could grow in five years and be on that, on that cusp. I will say, I don't know a lot of the schools that are that small are in that position, though.
No, I wouldn't think so.
Yeah.
Nicole?
So, I just want to follow up on what Dr. Anderson was saying. I think yes, and we already have two schools that we know are tier-one, so some of that digging can start, maybe even in advance of that being announced, because we do know we have schools that are already in those conditions, to the extent that we're looking at system-wide levers and system-wide data that we can collect in advance to sort of help with that. So, I would say...
Stacy?
And I've said this in other meetings, I think the key to the communication piece of this is what Robin has been showing us for like, three years now, and that is what the different rounds mean, when you have three rounds versus two rounds versus one round. And I think that's the key, because a lot of parent, we've gotten emails over the years that said, we love our small school, but you need to guarantee us a second round. We love our small school, but we need a full-time, whatever it is. And all the presentations that Robin's been doing over the past three years have been explaining these rounds, and what, what you get when you have more rounds, and what you don't get when you have less rounds. And I don't think parents really understand that. So, thank you for doing that, I think it set this up really well, but I think we need to just really get that out there. I think that's the key.
And no matter how much we get it out there, there will be people who say, you never told us this. It drives me crazy.
But, but I would say this, right? That if, you know, we've had a committee meeting for, for a good part of the year, who's given us some great advice, and then, and then, so we've engaged our community. You know, if you adopt some types of, of early warning indicators, right, that, that become public, if the board digs into work and directs us to start digging into some of the systemic issues and impacts that it has on all of this together, and all those are public meetings, right, at the end of the day, and, 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 to be clear, I think, I think, you know, engaging our community is going to be important, and not everybody's gonna want the same thing. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a complicated set of, I'd like this, I want that. To your point, it, and, you know, and we have to think systemically, right? And parents have to think about the second grade number of kids in their kid's class, right? So, I, I, I think that this is the, the right way to go about doing it, that, that it's hard. I'm so thankful to the folks that have served on our long-range advisory committee to push the district, to come together, Rob and his team, and so, as we're thinking about wrapping up this presentation, the direction I'm hearing, Rob, and certainly Lisa, or if others want to clarify, that when we take this back to our long-range advisory committee, that there is a, there is a desire to, you know, do you just sit around and wait from tier-one to tier-two? What are the, some of the system-level work or recommendations that could potentially happen? For me, the challenge will be getting that work in front of the board. Right? Because if you're talking about open enrollment policy, if you're talking about attendance boundaries, if you're talking about these big gnarly systems, that'll just take a commitment of work, right, and a commitment of time to be able to dig into those things appropriately. Those aren't half-hour sessions. Right? And so, as long as we have a commitment collectively from the board that you're willing to dig in, roll your sleeves up and do some of that stuff, you know, then we can start to think about that as we think about prioritization as well.
Well, I know that we have a team here that is engaged in very complicated kinds of community conversations over the past several years, and I can't think of a stronger team to lead this effort. And to your point, Rob, a special thanks to Jeff and Yvette, and to the rest of your team. This is incredibly thoughtful work, and I really appreciate you coming here today and sharing it all with us, and I, I don't know if look-forward is quite the right term, but I appreciate the thoughtfulness with which this has been constructed, and, and I'm eager to see what else you'll bring our way.
So, to clarify, next steps, coming back to long-range advisory committee?
Yep.
Then coming back to the board?
June 13th?
Yep. With this feedback, with a finalized?
That is correct. So, yeah, May 22nd, long-range advisory committee, we're gonna present the feedback of what we heard tonight, we'll finalize the proposal, it'll come back to the board on June 13th in a similar format. I don't think this takes board action, we should probably talk about that for a second, but I believe this would be an information item only.
I think the board action was, we gotta get mov-
Yeah.
We've gotta get moving on it, start to figure it out.
I just want to make sure I'm clear, to me, this would, might be an exhibit to a board policy, if anything.
So, I have one question. In the tier-two on the slides, it kind of said, you know, community engagement process, the board will decide the timeline, there is a lot of vagueness to that. I would, in your evaluating of what other school districts have done, what has occurred, do you have a sense of how long of a timeline is appropriate? We wouldn't want to say, I, I wouldn't want to just take a stab in the dark of how long a school community might need to take to mull this over, multiple years, probably not ideal, too short of a time, probably not ideal. Do we have some concrete information about what that timeline should be? Because I would like it to be consistent for every iteration, and I would kind of like, I would prefer some of this, the processes parts really shored up before the next board is installed, installed, and before schools start to begin going for these processes, so it's really clear, like, all schools will get X amount of time to make these decisions, or, and shore that up, because it was a little bit vague.
We'll work on shoring that up for the next meeting.
All right then, folks, I think that that is it for us tonight, so whether you are driving or biking in the rain, I hope you have an excellent evening, and we are adjourned.